Is Deanna coming?
She's gonna be late. All right, well, call meeting in order, we'll do the pledge. Look, Gina.
Kind of shit.
Listen to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in my heart.
Roll call. Here.
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 Here. All right, so now, I read my part here. A quorum being present, first order of business is to hold a public hearing on the budget, prepared in tentative form as set forth in the minutes of the meeting of the Board of Education held on July 16, 2019. The Secretary of the Board of Education has submitted affidavits and certificates of publication from the landmark in suburban life stating that a tentative budget for District 208 for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and ending June 30, 2020, was placed on file and was conveniently available at the district's administrative offices. Notice was given that a public hearing on said tentative budget will be held at 7:00 PM on September 10, 2019, is today. Due notice has been given of the public hearing on the budget and all other statutory requirements preliminary to the holding of such public hearing has been compiled with. Dr. Skinkis, Ms. Mettana will present and explain the 2019-2020 budget and answer any questions from the board.
Thank you, Wes. Kristin's done a great job on this budget. We've been working on it since June. We've had two finance advisory council meetings. Originally, when the board seen the first draft of the tentative budget in June, the projected deficit was close to 650,000, and tonight's final budget has a projected deficit of 400,000. So although we are still projecting a deficit, which is never positive news, we have been able to tighten some things down, also make some corrections to revenues now that we received additional information from the state to bring the deficit down. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Kristin and let her, as the Assistant Superintendent, proceed with her presentation on the budget.
Good evening. Tonight's my pleasure to finally present the final budget for fiscal year '20. I'd like to begin on Board Book, page 7. This is the executive summary for the budget. As Dr. Skinkis was mentioning, you can see the total operating fund revenues, which are listed in green, which is a little over $26 million. And then the total operating fund expenditures, which are listed in red, are $26,976,037. So this results in a deficit of $452,714, which includes the working cash transfer. So without the working cash transfer, we're about a deficit of $402,000. Again, as Dr. Skinkis mentioned, this has reduced significantly since when we first approved the tentative budget. A lot of new information became available in August from the state about additional revenue coming in, as well as using last year's actuals to reduce some line items in the budget. If you look at the bottom of Board Book, page 7, you will see our operating fund balance as a percent of operating expenditures. Without the $2.9 million in working cash, which is reserved, we estimate that we will finish fiscal year '20 with 48 percent. And this percent is important because this means that next year, if we weren't receiving any revenue, we'd be able to operate for approximately 48 percent of the school year. And that's a healthy number. Lastly, I'd like to highlight the historical summary of revenues and expenditures on page 8 of Board Book. This has been revised after a meeting with the Finance Advisory Council. So as you can see, we created some different categories for expenditures to try to capture a better sense of what our major expenditures are on, and then add some graphs. So as you can see, a majority of our revenue comes from local property taxes, and a majority of our expenditures go to general education, specifically salary and benefits. At this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I think there was only one question that was submitted from the board that may apply to the budget, and that was regarding CTE and Perkins. And Kristin, do you want to address that question now?
Sure, I can address it now. So Perkins Career and Technical Education Grants, there are two grants, and they are spent to support programs in our Applied Arts Department, as well as career exploration in these areas. Specifically, we use the grants to offset approximately 2 percent of the salary costs for individual teachers within that department, professional development, as well as subcosts for this, curriculum revisions, or curriculum development work. So often, they will update the curriculum based on new trends, and the grant will pay for that. We also use the grant to purchase software and supplies for courses, as well as any equipment that is needed.
And there was one correction, just on a footnote basis, on page 8 of Board Book in the budget. This is a nice expenditure, revenue and expenditure analysis, appreciate the pie graphs. For transportation, a board member did submit a question asking for clarification. Special ed transportation, athletic transportation, all transportation is included in the expenditure fund, in the historical transportation fund.
Correct, and the updated version will be on the website tomorrow.
And those were the only questions that we received in regards to the budget.
We scrubbed this pretty good the last couple months, I'll have to say. But I do like the questions.
Me too.
Hey, I think it now is an opportunity for you to ask if there's any citizen comments on the budget or the public hearing.
The meeting will now be open for public discussion, and all persons in the hearing to be heard will be heard at this time. Is there anyone who wants to talk? Ladies? All right. Seeing that there are no further comments from the public, can I have a motion to adjourn? Is that what we do?
Yeah, adjourn the public hearing.
Adjourn the public.
I make a motion that we adjourn the public hearing of the budget.
We have a second.
Second.
Vote all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And now declare public hearing on the budget completed, and the regular meeting will now proceed.
Okay, so we did the public hearing on the budget, we did public discussion, and we're on the FOIA items.
FOIA.
Let me find my FOIA chart here. We had two FOIAs that were submitted. Board Book, page 1.
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Two FOIAs were submitted, the responses are attached. One was from Open the Books, and the other one was from K-12 Transportation Research Firm. And the Spencer Ed Transportation Act the district uses is purchased through the Ladsy Cooperative, and the document that was requested by Open Books was provided.
All right. District Goals Report.
We have three administrators present tonight to provide district goals updates, along with Dr. Freitas. If they'd like to come forward, Brendan and Dave, do you want, I know Brendan, he has a soccer game he has to get back out to, so he might just want to do the report quick, and then we'll go to Beth. Beth, you're more than happy to sit at the table with him, this way all three of you can be up there. So we have Brendan Curtin, Assistant Principal of Athletics, Dave Mannan, Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, and Beth Augustine, Assistant Principal of Student Services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I can lead off and discuss, talk a little bit about the student athlete engagement the last school year. We had 817 students participate in a sport. 527 of those students participated, they were single-sport athletes. Approximately 290 were multi-sport athletes. Only 38 of those student athletes participated in three sports. This number is up approximately 8 percent, which is a positive, given the National Federation of State High School Associations recently revealed that participation rates in sports overall declined for the first time in 30 years. Our summer camp numbers were also on the uptick. We had over 1,000 summer campers. This is an approximate 10 percent increase. Part of that is due to our Boys and Girls Lacrosse Camp starting this past summer. We separated the volleyball camp, it was no longer a co-ed camp, we had a girls' camp and a boys' camp. We did the same with cross-country as well. I think these summer camps obviously play a significant role in driving up our participation numbers, and will be a primary factor as we move forward in engaging our students in athletics here at Riverside Brookfield. Some of the other additional initiatives that will, I shouldn't say initiatives, but I'm planning to engage student engagement with athletics, coaching clinics, youth clinics, basically doing everything we can to get our junior high feeder school athletes on campus so they can get a taste of how special athletics here at RB are, and gives them a chance to familiarize themselves with some of our outstanding coaches that we have on staff. So the arrow is pointing in the right direction in terms of student athlete engagement here at RB. I think we all know that the biggest challenge is encouraging those multi-sport athletes. Although that number is still on the uptick from last year, we know that there's still room for growth, and that's certainly an area of concern within the athletic department. This time, I'll turn it over to Dave for...
Well, for sports, though, don't we want to take into account, we have more students who are playing club, and if they're playing club, I don't think it's a reasonable expectation for multi-sports. I mean, if they're club athletes, they might not want to play another sport because risk of injury, blah, 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 or commitment to club. I mean, I think as a board, our district goal is that they're engaged in at least one sport or one activity, right? I don't think that we are...
Right, what was the number?
Driving that they're multi-sport.
Sure. Well, I think obviously, once student athletes get to that junior and senior year, they're usually kind of locked in on one sport. I think having 38 student athletes that were three-sport athletes, I think we should encourage our freshmen to ride all the rides, to try everything out, right? And then they can make that decision as they progress to the varsity level. But yeah, as far as club sports, you have, you know, every sport that we offer here at RB has some type of AAU, travel league, things of that nature. So we understand that some athletes are going to make that decision to focus on one, and obviously, we'll certainly support that, but at the same time, if they're not involved in a club or AAU, we'd like to try and get them involved.
Really, the only AAU circuit that's big during school year is volleyball, maybe a little spring basketball, right? Fall, possibly baseball. There's no AAU for football, so there's 100 athletes that should be able to participate. Lacrosse, I don't think there's necessarily a club circuit for that just yet, AAU. So I mean, there's opportunities for kids that are on track to run cross-country in the fall, right?
Absolutely. No question.
Swimming. All the other coaches seem to always recommend swimming, right, in the offseason for the other athletes, because it's a whole round.
I think Laura brings up a good point. There are some kids that specialize in the club circuit, but there's enough here that where they could do possibly two sports, at least two sports, especially early in their career.
Sure, I think there's obviously value in being a multi-sport athlete, but we know that, you know, sometimes some of those elite athletes that have been recognized as elite athletes, obviously, there's some wisdom in focusing on one sport, obviously, but, you know, those elite athletes are far and few between.
Right.
We just might want to find a way to quantify that, just so you don't feel like we're missing a mark, like especially, again, like your junior, senior, if you find a portion of those have committed and they're all your athletes.
I think...
Just to not misrepresent the efforts of our athletic team.
Absolutely.
That's, you know, what we're trying to say, right?
Dave, activities.
All right, so I'm going to tag team what Brendan just reported on. We're kind of, this report that we present on is both extracurriculars, which I oversee, and the athletic areas that Brendan oversees. So this report, overview participation data from our extracurricular and athletic teams in regards to the 70 percent district goal. We enjoyed many successes that Brendan presented on just now, much of which came through students that participated in several differing activities. Overall, the engagement rate for this last school year was 72 percent. The overall percentage, we sorted in that category, that is below our overall percent by grade level. If you look at the grade level participation, we stayed pretty consistent throughout each one of our grade levels, but if you look at, for students involved in 1 and 2, it's pretty consistent, but if you look at students that are involved in 3 or more, we saw a lot of successes. So overall, we were up from 274 last year to 367, excuse me, 1718 to 367 in 1819, which is significant.
And that includes a club or a sport, right?
Club and/or sport. So, and that's, I know that, you know, Brendan said 38 students are involved in 3 or more activities, that's significant, you know, and that's just sport-related. So if you look at the extracurricular side of things, we, our athletes are now in a ski club, or, you know, prior to last year on the lacrosse team, or in robotics, or hockey, or any of the other things that, you know, we have out there. We've really tried to spread our wings and the opportunities that we provide our students, and they, to their credit, have come to us and said, hey, we want to do this club. Last week, I had a student come to me with a chicken rotisserie club. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna look at every avenue, and if kids want to get involved in, we'll go with it. So, you know, I want to thank the board for your encouragement in helping students in providing these opportunities for them. So looking at the chart, the third chart, is a three-year historical percentage of students in extracurricular activities per grade level. Again, we, from 1617, overall percentage of engagement was at 66 percent. At that time, we were just slowly kind of re-acclimating different clubs and starting new clubs, and from then to now, 66 to 72, I think we've done a lot of good work, and there's still some work to do as well. Going forward here, I just put a couple of goals on here, is that we can, we want to continue to expand, along with Dr. Freitas's initiative, just encouraging students to get involved through spirit-related activities, whether that's through SA, or the 12th man, or sixth man, and things like that, and offering those opportunities to students. We want to work with our sponsors. My big push this year is community-related events, so homecoming is approaching. We're looking to partner with a lot of our local businesses, maybe to paint our extracurriculars on their windows. So we're really getting our, you know, our brand, our school, our spirit, out in the community, which hasn't been something in the past that we've really seen. So we're really going to try to push that this year. And then do extracurricular showcases in a cafeteria where our choir will perform, our dance teams will perform, hip-hop will come out, SCCLA will do baking and things like that in the holidays. So we really want to just showcase our, what our kids are doing to other kids, as well as throughout the community, because that's what we're here for as well. So, and then, did you have a couple on the athletic side, too?
Well, I think again, in terms of increasing athletic engagement, we are increasing our number of junior varsity competitions. We're always searching to have those freshmen be matchups, again, to get kids as much opportunity to participate and compete as they can, to provide them with a fulfilling experience to keep them coming back. Our two of the biggest components of driving student engagement within athletics, one is participation, right? It pays to get on the field, on the court, and compete, and two is to try and capture those kids as soon as they step foot on campus.
One last thing that I'll note is, we really unified within the last week our social media platforms. So Twitter, now we have a student activities page.
I noticed. Good job.
We've been tweeting. Put a poll out yesterday. So we're on Twitter, we're present, and what's nice is our IT department was able to link all of our outlets into the different avenues that we have, whether it's Instagram, Facebook, Twitter. So whenever one of us tweets, one of our student affairs, or student services, or athletics, or the principal, it will all go on our Facebook, so everyone will see that, regardless of what platform you're on, which is a great idea, and something that we've initiated this year as well.
Yes, very good.
Can I ask, is there ever any effort to reach out to those kids that aren't involved? There was like over 600 kids, to find out like why they're not?
Yes. We did a survey two years ago, we didn't last year, so we're going to do that again. And the survey was just done in our English classrooms to identify, what do we need to offer, how do we need to reach out to you? One thing that we're doing, and we'll continue to do, is meet with our transfer students once a quarter to have lunch with them, to see if they're connected, and if they're into any of our athletic, extracurricular avenues. So we'll continue to do that as well.
Do we know where the 600 lies in like high grades or low grades?
It's our juniors and seniors.
Seniors just, well, I see the numbers that kind of follow off.
Yes.
Because they're seniors.
Yeah, and so I think we'll, to your point on that survey, we'll highlight specifically for seniors, what is the reason? And if you participated previously, why? Because that's where we're falling through a little bit, so.
Do we have a pulse on how many of our students have jobs? And I certainly wouldn't ask anybody to have to go out and get more data, but I was just wondering, is that something that you have a feel for that our seniors are leaving because they have part-time jobs, or?
That was the primary reason in the survey two years ago as to why they weren't involved, was they had jobs.
Okay.
Any additions to questions on the engagement?
I don't think there were any other questions submitted, so if the board's okay, I'd like to turn it over to Beth now.
All right, well, thank you for letting me speak with you tonight. I'm going to start with graduation rates.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, Beth. There was one other goal that Dave had to speak to, or do you want to come back today?
I could come back too.
Come back, Beth, go on, she's on graduation, right? We'll come back.
Are you sure? Okay, so graduation rate.
Sorry, Dave.
So for the class of 2019, what is reported to the state is 93.9 percent. When I made my projection this time last year, we were looking at 94.6. I was off by .7 percent, and the data below gives you a little bit of insight as to why I was off. We did have five students not graduate at the May ceremony, but attended credit recovery over the summer. We had five students, and all five graduated through credit recovery, so that was positive. We did not have any students, fifth-year seniors, returning from the students that didn't graduate in May. We had seven students drop during the 1819 school year, and that number is larger than we've had in the past. I broke down the, those 14 students into the number of transfer students, special education students, students that wanted to pursue a GED, male, female, white, Latino, African-American. The good news, we did have two students that dropped out previously, not in their senior year. One of them in their sophomore year, and one of them in their junior year, returned this year. And the hope is that they will continue to work towards their credits and graduate, and then they'll be included in our adjusted cohort this time next year. So that was good news. But historically, over the last 10 years, we've had anywhere between seven and 13 students drop overall, and so that 14 is high. And I really looked at who those 14 students were, to kind of get a little bit of insight as to, you know, what happened, and most of them were attendance issues. And so what happens is, you know, students don't attend school, they get behind, they get frustrated, they get discouraged, then they don't come to school, they get further behind, and it just becomes this cycle. And as much as we start, you know, we work with them and try to come up with a plan, adjust schedules, work with our credit recovery program in-house, I think sometimes the discouragement is just so much greater than they can face. In addition to that, I think there is false information that achieving a GED might be easier than obtaining that high school diploma, and it's not, and that was actually the case of the two students that returned to us. They went out there and had recognized this is more difficult than we thought it was. I think more and more of our students are dealing with social-emotional issues that are, it's just this battle between, you know, dealing with, again, the emotional issues and dealing with school, and unfortunately, leaving school to some is the only option. So again, that's something that we'll continue to work on as a student services department and as a school as a whole. It's a collective effort with student services, with Dave and his team, and teachers, to try to really look and see what, why our students are struggling and why they're leaving us, because this is such a great place. It's like if you can't make it here, it's really tough out there in the real world. So we did have 11 students retain, not accept their diploma, special education students. All 11 of them met graduation requirements, they just chose to stay on for transition services. So if you include those into our graduation rate, it truly is a 96.6 graduation rate. So that sounds a lot better than 93.6. Sounds a lot better. And our adjusted from 2018 went from 94.3 to 97, and those were some students that came back as fifth-year and graduated, and then some transition service students that decided to take their diploma. So every year that, hopefully that 93.3 will increase next year when we do the adjustment.
And just for the boards, for some of the new board members, even though those students completed their graduation requirements but came back for transition services, they still count as being on your books as not graduating?
Correct. So the state does not consider them a graduate if they did not take their diploma. So they can stay on for services up until the day before their 22nd birthday. And I think that's something that hopefully the state, you know, every school faces this, hopefully something that this is something the state will...
So historically, that's why we report on what there would be, you know, with everybody that met graduation requirements, that's why you see the 96.6, because there's, you know, they have that right, or that option, so it's...
Does that adjust when they reach 22? Because at that point, when they, you know, move on?
Right.
Do they take their diploma then?
They do. And some of them choose to just stay on for services for an additional year. That's why, if you notice, in 2018, we went from 94.3 to 97. Some of those are students that just decided to stay on that one additional year for transition, but we really just report on that last year as an adjusted cohort. So, you know, every year, if we were to look at our graduation rate, it would probably go up a little bit as students are maxing out at their 22nd birthday. Any questions on that?
There were not any additional questions.
Okay. The next page is projecting graduation rate for the class of 2020. Currently, we have only lost three students to drops in GED, and that's where our focus is going to be, is to kind of keep it at that number. We're looking at nine students returning for transition. So right now, we're projected with the transition students at 95.6. That'd be great if we could hold on to that. And again, those are conversations when we have students that are talking about dropping, thinking about dropping, saying they no longer want to be in high school. Those are conversations that we have with the deans and the counselors and parents, and try to get them to understand that, you know, we'll work with, we'll try to create a plan that will suit your needs to not drop out. I think another important number there that I've added this year is freshman on track. The state actually provides us with a list of students that are now sophomores, freshmen from last year, who are not on track to graduate, and that's at 95.34. And that's going to be a real focus this year with the deans and counselors and social workers. What's going on with those students? Is it attendance? Is it some skill deficit, social, emotional? Is it all of the above? Working to really make sure that not only are we focusing on the current senior class, but our rising students as well. And I've just listed a number of things that we continue to do in student services in collaboration with the dean's office to try and support our students. And I think over the last two years, the social workers and psychologists have implemented homework hangout. From Monday through Thursday, there is an adult in the student cafeteria, and students can just come hang out, do their homework. We have NHS tutors there, we have snacks available, and so we're going to try and make this more of a mandated, I don't know, requirement for these students to come if they're failing. So we're really going to be looking at progress reports and quarter grades, reaching out to parents, saying this is available to them, they need to be coming, get the support, and try to get those, you know, grades up, so that, especially our current... and try to get those, you know, grades up, so that, especially our current freshmen, so that we're not looking at summer school for them.
Beth, I have a question. So for some of the seniors that you're trying to hold on to, are there credit deficits in core courses, or are these in some of the elective areas?
Both, but definitely in core courses as well. Yes. So if it's elective areas, sometimes we can be creative, you know, with how we can look at getting them to graduate. I mean, sometimes it's literally being short to 22 credits. So we look to be creative. I know in the past, we've worked with Kristin with special education students. Sheila can be creative in working with special ed students. So a lot of times, it's meeting those state requirements in English, math, and science.
And for the board, the reason why I bring that up is, you know, later on, we might have that conversation to look at state requirements and our requirements, and having some options that might allow a student to leave after three and a half years if they complete kind of a core.
And I have to say.
That might be a good fit for some.
Our early graduation numbers for December have definitely increased for students that want to start college early or they want to go out and get a job. This is my 16th year, and every year, I feel like that number increases just a little bit more for students that want to graduate in December.
Can you?
What is that number?
I think this year, we probably have 14.
Maybe something just in the future, could you add to this report?
Sure.
Just in your bulleted list or whatever, just so the board has an idea.
Sure.
But you lumped them into the final May number?
Correct.
Yeah, I think just to see the historical of the number of December graduates.
Yes, and I can give you, I can even give you five years' worth of data that I've got.
They're not playing three sports.
They're not playing three sports. Do you want me to go back to attendance now?
No, I'll go to matriculation. We'll let you finish.
All right, so then moving on to matriculation. We, for class of 2019, had 95.6. Students say that they were going on to a two-year trade prep school, four-year military. We had a higher number of students seeking employment this year. And I think in looking at those students that decided that employment was a better path, many of them, there were financial difficulties for college. Some of them did not have the best experience in high school and thinking work might be a better place for them to start, maybe figure things out before going on to school. You know, I just think maybe it's a changing time. And with the state looking at college and career readiness more than just college, I think we're moving in a direction too of not only exposing students to the option of two-year, four-year, and what school looks like, but helping them really be prepared for careers. And one of the big changes we're going to make this year is we've had a college fair in the spring since I've been here, and we're going to now change it to a college and career fair. So not only are we going to highlight a mini-college fair with two-year and four-year schools on one day, but we're going to open it up to a, like a work fair or a trade fair. And we are going to reach out to parents and community members and bring people in that will, you know, talk to our students about if you start this career or if you start in this particular job, options and pathways that it could lead you to. And I think that will, I think that will excite some of our students that it's not just, college is not the only option. We actually changed up our senior meetings this year. The counselors were realizing that when we were having senior meetings that were primarily for four-years, you know, students that were looking at a four-year school and even a two-year school, the students that were not interested were, you know, not really engaged. So we did four presentations this year. We surveyed the students, they got to choose which presentation they wanted to listen to. And it was interesting, we had a four-year in the auditorium, two-year with representatives from Triton. We had work in the alumni lounge, and Jim Franco brought in some different tradespeople and some people from the workforce to talk to our students. And then the military was up here, and it was 64% four-year, 17% two-year, 8% work, and 2% military. So it's like we've already identified these seniors aren't interested in pursuing work at some level. So we're going to do a better job in helping students kind of what options that they can go in the work path that could still lead to being, you know, financially secure and having advancement in that area. So that's going to be sort of our focus this year.
Beth, one of the things you said during your high school leadership meeting was more students have talked to their counselors that they, we see more kids looking at employment first right out of high school, and then they will enroll at Triton and pursue maybe going and getting certified as in that field.
Yeah, trying out, you know, again, maybe becoming a little bit more mature and just seeing what's out there, seeing if it's a job that they'd even be interested in before going out and pursuing and actually getting that certification or that degree. And, you know, working on that internship over the summer, and that's something that Kylie and I are going to be working on. So there's a lot of, I think a lot of interesting, innovative things that we'll be doing for those students that the two-year, four-year route is just not something that they're interested in at this time.
Do we also identify or highlight, like, certificate programs? You know, like an auto mechanic, you know, that's a certificate program. CNA, that's a certificate program. Those are jobs that pay, you know, better with a short investment?
And we're including those in the two-year, like the two-year track.
Tech trade.
Trade prep, we're including those.
Yeah, that's right.
It's just that population of students that we really just like to go out and start working and make some money and, you know.
We talked briefly, and obviously, the board's going to go through their goal-setting meeting and then open it up to stakeholders, but, and we'll have other representatives from the building administration on that process as well. But we've talked even a little, we've begun to discuss like what are some things we would recommend to the board. And this is one that we've started to discuss, like, is this one that we want to be tracking or do we go more to the freshman on track? Which is why I had Beth included on the bottom, because it's, it really is, I mean, if we're going to be, want kids to be college and career-ready, they need to be, they need to graduate. And if we can start making sure that they have a successful freshman year, right? I mean, even if you look at the data that Beth presented in the previous report, we're already at 95%, so we already have almost five, just under 5%, where like 4.7 of our freshmen are already falling off track. And so, you know, that number can only grow as things become more complicated in high school. So that may be something we want to maybe focus on more instead of maybe the matriculation rate, which is sometimes just a natural effect if we're doing things right with student services and the different opportunities we provide here. So it's something to think about as we go into the board evaluation and goal-setting process.
The Chicago Lab School definitely says the highest predictor of high school graduation is freshman year.
Correct.
And so, and that's.
I think it's definitely easier to catch them before they get into that vicious cycle.
Yeah, because that starts a track, it starts, path starts everything, and that's been repeated many times. So definitely there. And then I think there's trends out there now where some of the certification programs are even coming into the senior year. So those students who are just checked out because they're bored.
Well, we have two students this year participating in cohorts at Triton. One's in criminal justice and the other one is in.
See? Do the auto?
Auto, is it auto?
Oh, I think it's the CNA program.
CNA.
Yeah, so we'll continue to promote that. Kylie and I will highlight it again at parent-teacher conferences. We held a session both in the afternoon and the evening for any parent that wanted to come in and find out more about it, because I think you can share it with the students, but we really have to educate our parents that this is a bonus, it's a real benefit for our students if they take advantage of that. It's not for everybody, but, you know, it certainly could be for a population of our students. I think there was a question about the DVR field trip, like somebody had a question about that. So on October 23rd, we'll have approximately 80 of our juniors and seniors. We're surveying them through English classes to see if they'd be interested in attending this field trip. DVR is actually paying for the buses. And the programs are auto, computer science, manufacturing, and health science. 20 students in each group, and then they'll get to go to Triton and not just, it's not just selling Triton's program, but it's giving them sort of an overall information about that particular area and how they can, you know, basically grow in that area, and it could be a good career moving forward. I think that was a question about.
And DVR, a reminder again to the group is, that's the other cooperative. We belong to two cooperatives. LANSI is special education, and DVR is the cooperative we belong to with Ridgewood, Elmwood Park, Lyden, Oak Park River Forest, Proviso. And they, we have, we pay, all contribute to have one person manage our Perkins and Career and Tech Ed grants for us.
So that CTE?
Correct.
Flows through there?
Correct.
Throws, flows through them? And then does some of that?
The field trips and job shadowing and some of that.
Do we, are we also a pass-through, or is that a pass-through for feeders of that co-op?
Correct. The feeders also, there's opportunities that feeders can apply for additional grant money through CTEI and some of that.
There's a lot of partnership with Triton.
Correct.
Usually anything that we're doing, there's partnership with Triton. So the last page, what I just called some fun facts from the, actually, class of, I just noticed, class of 2019. I listed the four-year schools, top 20 four-year schools that our students applied to. You can see the number of transcripts that students requested and number of applications. There was one student that applied to 28 schools, so it ranged from one to 28. We had approximately 100 college admissions reps visiting RV this year, which I think when I first started, it was probably half of that. So I think our reputation out there is very strong, and college reps are coming here and wanting to recruit our students. And our students applied to 344 different colleges across the country. So I just thought that was some interesting information to look at. So, thank you.
Thank you, Beth. You guys stay now for days.
I'm going to definitely stay for a day.
I just actually have two. I'll do the summer school revenue second, and I'll do the attendance first. You've heard our attendance, our attendance overall percentage. Again, just to reiterate where we're at, at the end of the year, our overall attendance was 94.6, which is similar to what we had last year at 94.5. We were on, I think, a pretty good track with above 95% our first semester. And then it felt like we had a stretch of cold weather that lasted forever the second semester, which impacted not only our kids getting to school, but some health-related things that occurred as well because of the cold. And then we had one cold day where we stayed open, which impacted a little bit. I think we had around 80% attendance that day. The e-learning days actually increased that attendance a little bit since we were at 96% and 92% for those two days we had e-learning. But overall, we had 94.6. This year, you know, really what I'm learning about attendance is our overall district goal, we want to get to a 95%, and that's our goal at the start of the school year. And we are on a really good stretch, and then something will occur. Whether, you know, a couple of years ago, maybe a walkout, or, you know, or whatever happens. A couple of alley, or something will occur that will drive our attendance down. On those days, we typically have 60, 75% attendance on those days. And so if we can then catch, like, do the work in the middle, because we're going to schedule those events and know that that's going to hit our attendance up. But if we get after it upfront with our chronic truant students, which we know are there, then those are the kids that drive our attendance down mostly, and those were students that we need to bring to Beth, you know, because there might be some underlying things that are going on there. And so what we've done is created a new Google form and some interventions that our deans are doing so we can have that data documented, so that when we go to our teams with Beth and her counseling and her staff, we can say, okay, this is what we've tried, and then here's what we need to put in place under our Tier Two initiative with our psychologist going forward. And so that's something that we're going to really work on this year. Our deans do a good job. I think what's great about our B2 is that we're small enough where we really know our kids well. So we're not shy to get out there, go to homes, see what's going on, talk to our parents. I always say that we're in a partnership with our parents, and that's true. And so we want to encourage them to get their student here and vice versa. So whatever we can do to assist our parents. On that note too, last year, we, under the parent link on our website, we created an Attendance Matter initiative, which outlines, some parents don't know. You know, I'm setting my student, my child out for the first time to school this year. When do I call him in sick? You know, is it, does he have a little sniffle? Do I call him in sick or not? So our nurse put some protocols in place under that parent tab now that parents can visit and view and know that, okay, if my student has a fever over a certain amount, I'm going to stay, they're going to stay home for that day. And then when they feel better, they can come back. And there's other protocols, and then also data that's research-based about seat time and the importance of seat time and our students being here at school, in the classroom, and a success rate that happens because of that. And there's some documented data through that Attendance Matter link. So we're going to continue to push that out as well.
Can I ask, do you have like a trigger number that, like a number of absences or tardies that then triggers the interventions? Like when a student gets to seven or 10 or?
So we meet our attendance assistant, the deans and myself, meet on a weekly basis, almost twice a week. And then we'll look at her attendance data for that week and see where we're at. Typically, after five, then it's like we're calling parents in, we're putting initiatives in place. If it's under five, because five might be a couple of, you know, two times they got called out because there was a family thing, and then they were sick a couple of times. So five really is, okay, we need to start getting involved here. If it's below five, then it's really a call home to see what's going on and see if we can get documentation from doctors and things like that. So yeah, five is our marker per semester.
Thanks.
And Dave, before you go into the summer camp report, there were no other questions submitted. I do want to remind the board, in October, at the board meeting in October now under the new state law that e-learning days are officially accepted by the state. They did put a couple of steps in place, Governor Pritzker. And so we do need to conduct a public hearing in October to at least, to show the public our plan and to communicate how we plan to communicate e-learning days, determine an e-learning day and the steps we'll take. So my team and I are working on presenting that at the October board meeting. The last report Dave and Brendan have is the summer camp. Man, I really messed this up. I took, made you want you to go early, then I cut you off. This is just something, this should be short. There were no questions submitted. Back in, when I first started here, we had an issue with tracking the finances, and we were actually losing money on summer camps and summer school. Summer camps because we were paying out coaches and workers, et cetera, before all POs were collected. And then we had outstanding balances that the district was covering, and similar with summer school. So this has just become an annual report to show the board that we're running summer camps and summer school cost-neutral. A few years ago, the board said that it was okay for some of the summer school to not run cost-neutral if it was helping students to get back on track and help with the graduation and matriculation goals. But, so this is just an annual report to show you how many students participated in the either academic bridge programs or credit courses and athletic summer camps to ensure that the board is still being cost-neutral, operating cost-neutral over the summer. So Dave, if you want to hit yours real quick, and then Brendan?
So before we get into the report, something that we moved to two years ago, but really implemented last year, and I want to thank Kristin and her staff for this, is an online registration format for all of our summer school and summer camp programming, whether it's athletic or academic, which makes our job a lot easier when we're reviewing, because that information goes out early April, late March, early April. And then we can see who's registered online and who's paid and where our numbers are at for rosters during those classes. We typically will go, if we have 12 or more, is kind of like baseline for us to run a course. And they're core courses, so you're looking at, we ran Algebra I to trigonometry and geometry and the math sections this summer. We ran biology and applied chemistry. That course we did in more of an Apex online format. We did not have 12, but we want to offer science. And we know that we had students that needed some recovery in that area. So we were able to do it within an Apex format with a teacher in the room to assist with needs as they go forward. As we're looking at blended models, that's a perfect example of kind of a blended model that we implemented in the summer programming, which is nice. English 9, 10, and 11, we had eight students there. Health is something that we didn't offer, but now that we're back in track with the health, we had 19 students take advantage of health. So that was great. We had credit recovery. Basically, with credit recovery, first session we hold for students that are seniors that didn't graduate. didn't graduate and need credit recovery within an Apex format. And so first session is really all of our seniors that didn't graduate wanna make sure that we get them completed, because typically we can see a student get done with potentially two courses within that first session to help them get done with their credit requirements and then receive their diploma. So we saw for one credit recovery for first session, four, and then for a half a credit would be three. And then second session, any student, we put a requirement there. Any student that takes a physical class first session, whether in the seat, taking a class, if they need two credits, then we put them on Apex format second session. So we had quite a few. We had 20 that needed one credit for second session and then seven for a half a credit. And if you don't know, Apex is a guided online format that offers a visual modality for our students to learn in. And we have a teacher that's there as well, as well as potentially an aide in the classroom to help any students that have services. And then US government is something that we always hold in numbers, typically around 33. This year was a little bit less, and I don't know the reason for that, but we had 25. So maybe students are looking at different electives or already have that mapped out, but that was around 25. And then for non-credit courses, band, orientation, marching band, those numbers are pretty consistent from last year. Those were around 30. Bridge to RB, we had 37. We market that pretty well and it's usually a highly attended program. It's an opportunity for our eighth graders to come, or eighth grader, incoming freshmen to come in, meet with our teachers, and we put them through kind of a simulated class as well as guided tours. The administration speaks to them as well and they do some differing activities throughout the building, just to get comfortable with the program that we offer here at RB. Bridge to honors, pre-calculus, Mr. Dibis ran that. He had 17. That's the second year that's ran. That, to me, means that they're doing a really good job in the math department of, hey, let's make sure you guys get these concepts down and ready before you get into calculus. I love seeing that. And I love kids that take the opportunity to do math in the summer, you know, or they could be doing other things. Camp College, Mr. Franco does that. And that's really to introduce, yeah, applications.
Essays.
Yes, yeah, how to write your application essay and just getting a feel and researching. And then he brings in also some college recruiters to those summer programs as well. And then Gary Prokso, his RB TV is something that he does with the freshmen as well. They come in and they review all the RB TV structure and program that we have here. So overall, 264 students. We had 22 waived students. The revenue was 41,000. We also included a title grant that we get in there as well. And the title grant goes for any expenditures that we don't meet with the revenue that came in because of the teacher's salary. So we have to offset that with the title grant that comes in. So we allocate 13,200 and then we add a carryover of 5,979. So we were on the positive side. So summer school does run cost-neutral to the district. And then the additional funds go to the retirement for, to pay for the retirement for the teachers that are on, are on a stipend for their time in the summer, so.
Can I just ask a best question? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Do the feeder schools, are they strategic in who they kind of market that bridge to RB class? Because that could really help, like your on-track freshman number, if you kind of identify those kiddos coming out of eighth grade who, like, these might be some kids who really might benefit from bridge to RB.
Mm-hmm.
Do the feeder schools even know?
Feeder schools know. I don't know how well they market it. We might be able to do a better job during that Saturday registration, maybe kind of flagging students when they're taking their classes, when they're meeting with myself and the counselors to kind of bring that up.
Or even to the parents.
Right. Well, we're meeting with the parent and the student, it's like a one-on-one opportunity when they're choosing their classes. I know when I'm meeting with families and there's some hesitation and they're nervous about starting high school, like, come to bridge to RB. It's a great transition. They get their schedule, they can walk around the building, they find their lockers, they meet some staff members. So we could probably market it even better. This year it was later and I don't know, that was a different, that was a change. Previously, it's been right at the end of the school year and this year we tried it at the, almost at the start of the school year. So I don't know if that had something to do with it. But yeah, we could definitely try doing a better job with introducing it to families on that Saturday registration and just kind of planting the seed.
Okay. The athletic summer camps, we offered approximately 70 athletic camps that covered 22 sports, grades ranging from second grade to senior year in high school. All the camps ran cost-neutral, as Dr. Stinkus mentioned earlier. Camp fees can range anywhere from $50 to $240. Regardless of what the camp fee is, for every camper, $5 of that camper's fee is gonna go to our building fee that accounts for wear and tear on our facilities throughout the summer. An additional $5 will go to our athletic trainers that cover the camps and, you know, look after our athletes, provide them with hydration and things of that nature. And then $2 will go to the trainer's supplies. Again, all the camps ran cost-neutral. We had 1,065 campers, which is a 100-person uptick from last year, which is encouraging, especially considering that we didn't have the use of the swimming pool this past summer. So I would envision that that number will go up. And I think a big factor in driving those numbers was rolling out our summer camp dates a little bit sooner, a little bit earlier than they have been rolled out in the past to allow for scheduling for those busy summer days. So again, I'm excited about the, the direction of the summer camps. Again, the revenue is just north of $130,000. So after the building fee, the trainer's fee, and the trainer's supply fees are accounted for, as well as the supplies, T-shirts, camp prizes, things of that nature, some of that money will be allocated to the coaches based on the head coach's discretion, which some coaches take the opportunity to pump that money back into their activity account as well.
Okay, thank you, Brendan. I don't think there were any questions submitted on any of these reports. I'm sorry I mixed them up, but great job. Hector, this is your first time seeing this through, so next year you'll, I'll be able to report on data under your leadership. Kristin, this is a reflection of your leadership in your last year as principal, so good job to you too. And thank you, everybody, for participating tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Right. Visitor statements? I don't see visitors. Right on. Additional discussion items? At this point in the meeting, Board of Education members may request to add an additional discussion item. Am I right? Left?
Do you wanna reflect it on here?
I couldn't reflect it here.
Thank you.
We do your comments.
Aye.
Consent?
Consent agenda. Approval of minutes. Regular meeting August 13th, 2019. Do we need to read?
It's also a board book if you need to look at it.
I'm sorry. No, I can't. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the listed consent agenda items, approves minutes for the meetings held on August 13th, 2019, opening, close, as presented or amended in the September 10th, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Do we have a second on the motion?
Oh, we didn't give a second. See, I just.
Second.
Janice here, a second. I think she, her mic cut off. So Ramona was the initial motion and Janice here was the second. Wes, you wanna take another vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Old business. Talk about life safety items, capital improvements.
In regards to the capital improvements, the pool is done. It's in operation. Again, we, we're scheduling a facilities advisory council to do the close-out documents and do a final walkthrough. All that is taking place. We feel we're in a solid place. Our architect and engineer will provide some written documentation to a change in the number, the ventilation numbers that were provided and originally designed for, but we're well within ASHRAE standards. And so we'll have that meeting in October and that project, I would assume, will be closed out shortly thereafter. I think we're just having a little issue finding some dates. And then what we'll need to start doing after that is starting to go out to bid for the summer of 2020. We have three small sections of roofs remaining. I'm assuming it's somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000. These are life safety dollars that we do have budgeted for. So in the summer of 2020, we'll have the final three sections of roof that will need to be completed as well as some minor repairs. But we're getting near the end of all of our life safety repairs. And that's all I have in regards to life safety and capital improvements.
Okay. Do we need to adopt the budget fiscal year 2020?
We'll need a motion.
So we need, is there any discussion? I think we discussed it in the public. It's okay. I'll read the motion. Ask for?
92?
The whole thing?
Page 94.
Oh, 94. Okay. I'll read it. Just hang on, I'll get that. That's not it.
No, wait, I'm sorry.
92.
92.
Sorry.
92.
It's in the wrong packet. Okay, here we go. I got it. Yes. Whereas the Board of Education of Township High School District 208, Cook, Cook, Cook?
County of Cook.
County of, sorry. County of Cook, State of Illinois caused to be prepared in tentative form a budget and the secretary of this board has made the same conveniently available to the public for inspection for at least 30 days prior to final action thereon. Whereas a public hearing was held as to such budget on the 10th day of September 2019. Notice of said hearing was given at 30 days prior thereto as required by law and all other legal requirements have been complied with. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Education of said district as follows. Section 1, that the fiscal year, the fiscal year of this school district be and the same hereby is fixed and declared to be beginning July 1, 2019 and ending June 30, 2020. Section 2, that the following budget containing an estimate of amounts available in each fund separately and of expenditures from each be and the same is hereby adapted as the budget of this school district for said fiscal year.
Second.
A second.
Ms. Alice, second.
All right, this is a roll call.
Definitely. This is a big deal.
Ms. Jacobs?
Yes.
Ms. Seera?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Ms. Alice?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Fesca?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right. New business, payment of bills?
There were some questions submitted, so Kristin, do you wanna address the questions? Please give the page number.
Page 104 of board book, there was a question on K lots. That is the amount, the $1,500 is the amount for approximately one-third of the year. So about $4,500 a year spent on toilet paper. The next question was on board book page 112. This question was submitted on first student, cross-country transportation. This transportation is for one meet, but it's for boys and girls. And so there were two buses, so $260 each, and it was slightly higher because there was a conflict fee based off the time of when the students had to. Board book page 122, there was a question about Joversa Ford. This is for our driver's ed vehicles. We pay $9 a day for each driver's ed card. The invoice is for two different months, June and July, and so one day, one month had one more day, which is why we're billed an extra $18. Board book page 124, K log, contemporary chairs. This is a set of five chairs for a conference room, so approximately $175 a chair. And then there was also a general question submitted about E-rate dollars. And we do not use a consultant to capture E-rate dollars. We don't have a high enough pre-reduced lunch population, so we get the minimum percentage. And we also have contracts, which make the process more simple, so we don't have to go out as often.
And there's one other question submitted. Ari Walsh? It was the one, last question.
Must have overlooked that question.
So Ari Walsh and Associates are the firm that we use to do all of our residency investigations. So they'll do home visits, they'll sit on students who we feel might be living outside the district to check residency, stuff like that.
They also come to our annual residency event and then if we have an issue, they go out that day during residency with the family to verify.
Great, thank you.
That was submitted, I didn't mind not to put that on your list, Kristin. There was just one question submitted, so.
And that was it that I received.
Right. Need to, motion, motion for that one?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois approves the payment of bills as presented and listed in the September 20, September 10, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Tom Jacobs, second.
It's a roll call vote?
Yes.
Ms. Tanner?
Yes.
Ms. Alice?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Fesca?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
And Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Voting prevention policy review?
School code requires that every two years the bully prevention policy be reviewed. The administration did such a review and is presenting it to the board. The only changes that need to be updated are, we're taking out Chief District Financial Officer and just replacing it with a super, Assistant Superintendent for Non-Discrimination Coordinator. That's in 720, 7.
180.
180. And I think that's the only two.
So discussion? All right, so we'll read the.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois has reviewed and approved the revisions to the current board policy 7:20 and 7:180 as presented in the September 10, 2019 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Educational tour request?
There were, I think, two questions submitted, both of the same nature in regards to chaperones. Dr. Freitas, you wanna address those, please?
Good evening, Honorable Board Members of District 208. So our admin, the question was, what is our student chaperone ratio? So our admin procedures here at RB is to have one chaperone per 10 students. In addition, we have always honored the student chaperone ratio required by our partner organizations. So if the museum requires 14 per one, you know, we would honor that. University partners, local partners, whatever the requirement sets forth, we honor that student chaperone ratio. We will also work with board policy to ensure that we have the right amount of chaperones, the right type of chaperones for any and all future trips.
And I think that's what Hector was trying to address, is that if, if there are any male or female, that we make sure we have a chaperone of each gender.
That is, that is correct.
And I don't think there were any other questions submitted about the educational tours.
And this is our first read of these, correct?
It is correct.
Well, so has anything been amended since?
Yeah.
Right? Because one of them was not in line with, did I read that right? Right? One of them was not in line with the gender of the chaperones possibly being?
I think you asked about the magical singers, but at this point, we don't have any male students in the magical.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure.
So that's why he addressed, made sure, that if we do have a male go out for magicals, we'll make sure that we, I know, but I'm answering the question.
All right, okay. I wasn't sure on the makeup of the club, right?
So what's happened in the past is, yes, this is a first read. At times, the board has elected after a first read to approve these, so if there's any fundraising or anything that needs to take place, they can do that. Since we are meeting on September 24th for the committee whole, it's simple for Marion to call that a special meeting and you can vote on it. we'll make sure that we, no, I'm answering the question.
All right, okay. I wasn't sure on the makeup of the club, right?
So what's happened in the past is, yes, this is a first read. At times, the board has elected after a first read to approve these, so if there's any fundraising or anything that needs to take place, they can do that. Since we are meeting on September 24 for the Committee of Whole, it's simple for Marian to call that a special meeting, and you can vote on it at the Committee of the Whole. If we do a special committee of the whole, is there consent agenda items on that, or no, we just vote on this separately?
But there could be a consent agenda because we do approve the minutes at the Committee of the Whole, I believe.
No.
A regular meeting, okay.
So it's up to the board if they'd like to have time to review these more, and that's fine. We could address it again in September, or if you want to move on these tonight.
Do we have your thoughts?
I have my question to answer, so I'm done. My preference would be to wait for the second time. You know, it's a kind of a protocol that we've kept. You know, in, in early years, we would get a request come to us, and it would be on fire. And it would be like, please, you know, try and pass it that meeting. And so now we've got it where the expectation is, is that it's going to be presented one meeting and voted on the next meeting. And I think this board has been open to those things that were, needed a quick approval. But I, I think waiting the two weeks is not.
Yeah, I'm agreeing. I follow Laura says. We're here to make people comfortable.
I think, I think you got to just make sure the rest of the board is okay with that.
Yeah. Any questions?
I mean, I can go either way, so it is. I think it's a good point to keep them not being last-minute requests, but at the same time, I know people do need to plan, and some of these are coming up in December, so it's fine, and at the next meeting.
So one of the things, you know, as we get to know each other as a board, you know, what, the way that came up, the previous board, we talked about not voting on things in the first meeting. As we meet during our meeting, that might be something we talk about, you know, during our retreat, you know, what's the protocol moving forward, how comfortable do we want to be, and kind of an expectation, a rhythm, so that everything flows much smoother. But just kind of one of the things for the list for us to think about.
Good.
Can't wait two weeks.
I am a ref service credit.
I am our F service credit. This is another first read.
This was something, I'm trying to find the page number. Marian, do you have that? Last name or?
219.
218.
Okay, so as the board sees in the background of this, the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund does allow you to honor up to four years of service credit for employees who are IMRF employees, so this would apply to our non-licensed employees or non, our support staff employees. It allows them to purchase up to four years of their military service. We talked about this as Advisory Council at our last finance meeting and thought that this would be a good policy for the board to consider, to honor and respect the, any of our employees who have put in previous military service, so they can buy some of that time back towards their retirement.
So this is new?
This is new, and this is a first read, and this would be to approve, I believe there's an attachment of, so we would adopt the policy, and we would allow.
There is a cost to the.
To the district.
To the district, yes.
Was that cost considered in our, in the budget we just approved?
It is not. It's approximately less than $500 a year.
Okay.
For every year they buy.
And it's not something that would, if, if you voted and approved it, it's not something that would take into effect this year. The policy would, but we wouldn't have to pay until the following year.
Do we pay it in a lump sum, or?
We would pay that additional, additional percentage every year. So it's an additional, it's a rate increase, which would roughly translate to probably about $500.
I see, okay.
Kristin, do we have to also update any policy with this?
I don't believe so, but I can look into that.
Why don't you verify that? And since this is a first read, we can, if it is, we'll include it with the policy at the second read.
And do we have any employees that would be able to take advantage of this?
I think up to two right now that we're aware of.
Okay. I mean, as long as we're going to implement something, it'd be a shame that nobody would be able to take advantage of.
Right. Well, I think it's a good way to, so certainly get back to the military.
Yeah.
That is, I think it's a good program. But, okay, we'll think about it, and we'll get some discussion in two weeks.
Do you have to bring it back?
Yeah, I need to bring it back. So this is, I just wanted to put it out there, see if there was any initial concerns or questions. Kristin will verify if there's, also needs to be a board policy adjustment, and then we will proceed accordingly.
Okay.
Okay, this matters for closed section, closed session. Personnel, student discipline, individual student matters, sale, lease property, pending intimate litigation, collective negotiation, and school safety. Another visitor statement? Would you, would you like to say something? We'd like you to. Let me read this, and then, and then you can come. So the Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor's statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions and/or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting is superintendent. All right.
Are you here for visitor's comments, or are you here for, after the closed session? Thank you. So I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. All right, I missed something. Sorry. All right. Discussion items requested. Consideration of items for future meetings. All right, it's closed session.
Motion for closed?
Motion for closed.
Resolved that the Board of Education Township High School District 208 Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, student discipline, sale or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
All right, Roke, second.
Second.
Laura Ruska, second. We need to take a roll call for closed session, I think, right, Marian?
Yes.
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 Yes.